To the Bloomfield Hills School District interviews for the 2020 November election. These interviews will be featuring the candidates who have filed for the Bloomfield Hills School Board. The Bloomfield Hills District includes the city of Bloomfield Hills, parts of West Bloomfield, parts of Troy, and Orchard Lake. There are six candidates, vote for three. This is a four-year term. Sponsor of this forum is the League of Women Voters Oakland area. I am Judy Bateman, a member of the League of Women Voters. I am not a resident of this district. The League of Women Voters is a trusted national nonpartisan political organization. Our members do the hands-on work to safeguard democracy. While we never endorse a candidate, we are directly involved in shaping the important issues that keep our community strong. As a League of Women Voters member, I have the opportunity to contribute in a leadership role such as this that has great impact on local, state, and even national issues. If you are interested in learning about how you can make a similar impact, I would encourage you to pick up some of the league's information available on the league website, l w v o a dot o r g. The League of Women Voters does not endorse any candidate or political party. Views expressed in these interviews are those of the candidates and the sponsors take no responsibility. The format for these interviews has been established by the League of Women Voters. We ask that the candidates answer the question with their views only. The candidates will be answering questions submitted by residents. The format is as follows. All candidates will be given a one minute for an opening statement. A closing statement will be thirty seconds. Candidates will have one minute each for three questions submitted to them in advance. All candidates for these offices have been invited. Our host and timer is Tara Moon. The candidates are Dima El Gamal, Renita James, Siva B Kumar, Michelle Southward, Jonathan Van Gemert, Samuel Walker. Also on the ballot is Nicholas Hoggan. Our interviews with the first candidate, Ms. Dima El Gamal. Ms. Magal, you may begin with your opening statement.
Good evening. My name is Dima El Gamal. I am a candidate for the Bloomfield Hills School District. I am a mother of two and an engineer by profession. I'm a principal, managing principal for a consulting firm out of Ann Arbor, Standard Consulting. I have two kids and my education. I'm a doctor in engineering from New State University. I'm happy to be here today. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Now, question number one, why are you running for the school board?
Thank you for that question. My platform is education excellence through mental wellness and inclusion. As a resident of the district since 2004, my goal is to give back to the district. This district has given my two kids an excellent education and a safe environment. In addition to my twenty-five years experience as an engineer, if elected, I plan on focusing my energy on mental wellness and inclusion. I learned the hard way that I need to work on building allies to promote equity and inclusion in all aspects of life. My son was called a terrorist in third grade. So to me phrases like privilege, an unconscious bias spark action that should be associated with measurable outcomes. So I actively work as a liaison to combat racism and debunk misconceptions. I want to work with the district to build inclusion, diversity, and mental wellness throughout the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Question two, if the COVID pandemic continues, what do you see as the long-term plan for Bloomfield Hills Schools?
So I'm cautiously optimistic and sincerely hope that it does not continue. But if it does continue, I don't see a one-size-fits-all for a plan. Unfortunately, districts are kind of being forced to make decisions with very little guidance, I mean, school board. However, I do see that we are going to continue to act as leaders. We are going to continue to weigh health and safety and see what the dynamics bring. And we could, we're going to be looking at what are we going to be faced with, with the dynamics that this pandemic is bringing? And the options of in-person, hybrid, or distance learning will continue to be on the table. However, the virtual school is going to continue to be an option even after the pandemic ends. And I think we're going to continue to cater to a lot of new school options such as the homeschool community and the private school communities. We're going to emerge from this much stronger and much, much more resilient as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Question three, other than COVID, what is currently the most important issue facing the district?
In 2004, I moved to the district because I know we strive, this district strives for improvement. So I think we have multiple things that are priorities. And I would like to work with the superintendent and the board on the mental wellness. I want to make, I want to make that as a priority. And I want to work with the existing board and the new board. And Mrs. Southward and Mr. Van Gemert is elected to pioneer incorporation of mental wellness as a graduating requirement. I want to also be able to work with the superintendent to kind of make, come up with a curriculum that makes it a graduation requirement. The bond that is coming up and the security improvements that are coming up. I want to also help with those to make sure that we have a deterrent effect to prevent internal and external threats to make those, make those implemented. I want to examine the district curriculum and infuse it at all levels with an equity and inclusion lens if elected as well. And I will be honored to get the district vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Now you're going to get your thirty minutes to wrap it up.
Thirty minutes?
I mean seconds. You caught me, thank you.
I love thirty minutes. Can you, can we stick to that? I want, I want to, I want to thank you for having me today. I want to tell you that I am, I am passionate about driving change and driving advancement. And I like to drive, I like to incorporate that passion and translate that passion into action. And I would be honored to win the district vote in November. It is, you know, it is, it is an honor to be able to incorporate educational excellence and mental wealth, mental wellness into an inclusive environment in local towns. And that would be what I would be striving to do. Thank you.
Thank you. We thank you for your participation and good luck. We're going now next to our next candidate, Renita James, who's the mother of Reina. If you see Reina up there, it's her daughter. But our, our candidate is Renita, and we're glad to have her. And she's going to begin now with her one-minute opening statement.
Okay, thank you for having me. Good evening, my name is Renita James. I am running for Bloomfield Hills School Board. My family and I have lived in Bloomfield Hills Township since 2010. As a former elementary school teacher, I knew early on that I had a passion for education. Making a difference in the lives of youth was and still is my top priority. Now, as a proud parent of a thriving nine-year-old daughter, I have kept the same tenacity by dedicating countless hours to ensure the success of her education. Currently, as a public servant for the last eighteen years with the state of Michigan, fourteen of those years as a department analyst, I understand what it takes to have integrity, character, being diverse, having compassion, and having a voice for the voiceless. I have a bachelor's degree in political science and an MBA. If elected, my top commitment will be ensuring that not only my daughter's best interests are heard and met, but the community as a whole.
Thank you. We're going to go to question one, which is why are you running for the school board?
That was actually my opener there.
Right.
Yep, that was my opener. So I don't know if you want me to repeat it or not.
Do you want to add anything to it?
Um, let's see here. Gosh, I think that pretty much had summed up everything because I wasn't for sure. You sent over the three questions. So that was my actually why I'm running for school board response.
Yep, okay. Question two, if the COVID pandemic continues, what do you see as the long-term plan?
Okay, all right, thank you. So on September the sixth, two thousand and twenty, the current school board approved for the in-person distinct learning criteria that transition into a hybrid learning model. If the hybrid model is successful with keeping everyone safe by keeping the COVID-19 infection numbers down, then by January two thousand and twenty-one, if elected, I will support the initiatives for in-person learning. However, if the numbers were to spike, then the district will have to reevaluate the hybrid model and transition to the remote learning criteria on a full-time basis. There are additional options to consider such as gathering polling information from parents regarding the school's reopening and operational procedures. Also having resources that support teachers and administrative staff. As stated, there is not a definite answer on how to address the reopening of schools. But what remains clear is keeping our students and staff safe.
Thank you. The last question is, other than COVID, what is currently the most important issue facing the district?
Thank you for that question. So the most important issue that is facing our district currently is the third-grade reading law, which was passed by the state legislator in two thousand and sixteen. This law requires all Michigan third-grade students not scoring proficient on a third-grade state assessment to be retained if they are one or more grade levels behind the reading level at the end of third grade. The federal Department of Education granted a waiver for testing mandates amid this pandemic for the school year. However, the federal Department of Education has no intentions of waiving the test requirement again for this particular school year. So parents, teachers, and staff and administration cannot afford to have our students placed below average. The silver lining here before COVID is that the district has addressed the literacy issue by placing kids into smaller reading levels. If elected, I will continue to support implementing learning tools that address different learning abilities.
Thank you. Now you have thirty seconds to wrap up, say anything else you want to say.
Sure. So I am again, of course, Renita James. I hope that I have your support on Tuesday, November the third, two thousand and twenty. And it's not just about what you say and how you say it. It's when you get into office, because you got to make everyone accountable, okay? And that's when the actual election actually starts. So again, I hope that I have your support on Tuesday, November the third, two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty. Again, my name is Renita James for Bloomfield Hills School Board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Our next candidate is Siva Kumar, and he's going to begin with his opening statement.
Hi, everyone. My name is Siva Kumar, and I'm candidate for one of the open seats on the Board of Education in Bloomfield Hills Schools. I work as a senior director at DWH, a strategy and consulting firm. I came to this country from India about thirty-two years ago. You get a degree in engineering. I got my degree from Wayne State and worked at Ford as an engineer for eight years. Then went to the Ross School of Business at Michigan to get an MBA and worked at Ford Finance for about ten years. Five of that as a product controller and about five in for treasury. I moved to a leadership role at Meritor, a supply truck about fourteen years ago, leading their strategy for Asia where I got to deal with boards both in China and India and where I built teams and put concrete actions in place to execute our strategies for these reasons, for these regions, sorry. I think with my experience interacting with boards, I can add a lot of value to the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. Question number one, why are you running for the school board?
Firstly, we were fortunate that both our kids who are now in college received an outstanding education from Bloomfield Hills Schools. And I feel that time has come for me to give back to the community. Secondly, you may be aware that Bloomfield Hills Schools have a draft of a strategic plan on their website with the intent of setting up objectives for student achievement. I still think a lot of work needs to be done, and I can help them do a lot of that work and help them translate that into detailed steps which, which will translate into measurable plans for what to do for our students. Lastly, in the area of cost and investment, I'd like to highlight my previous experience in finance where I did a lot of work both on the cost control side and in raising funds on the bond market. Thank you.
Thank you. Question two, if the COVID pandemic continues, what do you see as the long-term plan?
Well, the pandemic's been a huge challenge for BHS and all of us personally. The silver lining in all this has been the resilience of our teachers and our administration. Compared to the neighboring school districts, I think BHS has done an amazing job developing a hybrid model to get our students back to school. So I'd like to give kudos to both the teachers and the administration for offering this hybrid model and the virtual model as well. Going back to the original question, if the pandemic continues, I see a significant decline in state funding. And going through the financials on the website, a full eighty-four percent of the school district's costs are tied to salaries and benefits. So I see very limited room to cut costs. However, I still see opportunities over the long term. Maybe we've got to do more with less and, and not hire as many teachers as, as our senior staff retire.
Thank you. Number three, question three, other than COVID, what is currently the most important issue facing the district?
I believe the two hundred million bond that was approved by a resonance this past August will be a transformative opportunity for BHS. You've got great teachers, we've got amazing programs, but our facilities at our middle schools and elementary schools were lacking and really designed for the twentieth century. I think that approving these bonds will enable us to transform our school system. And I think it will enable it to transform into a school system for the twenty-first century and encourage a lot of young families to move into our district and set us up with a robust tax base for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. The last part is a thirty-second wrap-up, so you can just finish your thoughts.
All right. I'd like to wrap up by thanking the League of Women Voters for hosting this, this session. I pledge to always put the needs of our students first and I promise to weigh issues very carefully from all stakeholders before making any decision. I am not aligned with any candidates and I am not planning to get aligned with any board members. And I promise to give my honest, independent feedback to the board. My only goal is to do what's best for our students. I would really appreciate your vote on November third. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your participation. Our next candidate, Ms. Michelle Southward. And we're going to begin, Ms. Southward, with your opening statement.
All right, thank you. Thank you. I do appreciate this time. Good evening, everyone. As stated, my name is Michelle Southward, and my husband and I have four wonderful children. Our family have been living in the district for about ten years. And as a candidate, I know that I am committed to helping to continue to move our district forward. And if elected, I look forward to working alongside my fellow board members to support our students, staff, and community, community members. And in this time, I will be looking forward to initiating the change that we need to continue to grow our educational platforms. And I believe that working at the collegiate level has definitely prepared me for this exciting challenge, and I'm looking forward to the journey.
Thank you. Question number one, you kind of stated it, why are you running for school?
So basically, I'm running for a position on the Bloomfield Hills School Board to help bring about what I believe the change that's needed to advance our district to the next level. Basically, future thinking, united as one, Bloomfield Strong. I believe that our diverse learners deserve a steadfast leader that will stand up for what's fair and equitable, supporting and listening to our students, our teacher, and parent voices from all around our district. I believe that I'm a proven leader. I understand that, I understand what it takes to work collaboratively, and that's what's necessary. I know what it takes to be direct, to impact our educational systems platform for growth and development. I have nearly twenty years of experience working in higher education. And I have two master's degrees, one in mass, one a master's in counseling, and the other one in education. Basically, I'm running because I believe that I am one of the leaders that our district needs to have us seated at the table to bring about the change necessary for our students and our district.
Thank you. Question two, if the COVID pandemic continues, what do you see as the long-term plan?
I do hope that our state and our city, that we're able to continue to mitigate the current cases that we have in COVID. But day one, I want to take a look at our current action plans, gaps, and successes. So will we be able to initiate a return to full-day in-person school? We would know what processes and protocols that are necessary to continue to keep our students and staff safe. But working simultaneously on these plans, I believe that we'll be in a better position to prepare if we need to pivot quickly. Therefore, I would have no issue in supporting an in-person model that sustains, that is sustainable and is without gaps in our state guidelines. I would also want to be sure not to forget about our Bloomfield Virtual Schools with a full view of all the processes, including but not limited to the class size and supporting resources to ensure that our students and teachers are fully supported.
Thank you. Question number three, other than COVID, what is currently the most important issue facing the district?
I believe that as a, as a parent, as a future board member, I look forward to being an instrumental stakeholder in building the greater trust and a stronger relationship with our families and expanding our operational thinking regarding our high school and, and basically the options beyond high school, should I say. I believe that we need to look at learning more about our students and teachers' direct and indirect needs, advocating for programs to support our social and emotional well-being. As we continue to maintain smaller classroom sizes, I'm looking for more direct personal connections. I'm looking for us to look at our learning styles and making sure our students are socially comforted in the, in the, inside the classrooms.
Thank you. We've come to the end of the questions, and now you have thirty seconds to make your final statement.
I believe that I would like to support a robust mental health educational program for our students and staff expanding on our social and emotional well-being. I would like to support increasing our equity and inclusion across our district's practices throughout our school and curricula and directly addressing the achievement gaps and establish tiered initiatives and targeted services for all of our learners as well as to improve our community relations and commitments to our communication across the district throughout intentional initiatives.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your, your participation. Thank you for coming. Our next candidate is Mr. Samuel Walker for the Bloomfield Hills School Board, and he's going to start with his opening statement, Mr. Walker.
Hello, my name's Samuel Walker, father of five, and in the Bloomfield Hills community since two thousand and nine. I have had already two older kids graduate from the school system, and I have two kids in the school system now. I love being in the community, and I want to be more involved in the community, more active part in the community.
Thank you. And the first question is, why are you running for the school board?
My motivation for running for the school board is to be involved with the community process. You know, I feel that the school board is a point two for the future of the students in the community. And I think that we, we, the, the community is getting more and more diverse. And I think the school board should reflect that diversity for all the people in the community.
Thank you. Question number two, if the COVID pandemic continues, what do you see as the long-term plan?
Um, I think the long-term plan is to continue to listen to the experts, the science, and also take the advice of the community leaders. And I think the, the best thing would be to just continue to understand what the, the risk is, where it is, the effects of staying home or being in school. And I think we should take the, the best road forward considering all the information that we have.
Thank you. The last question is, other than COVID, what is currently the most important issue facing the, the district?
Uh, for me, the most important issue is the achievement gap between the students and, and the community. I think that a lot of the, the black kids in the community are performing lower than a lot of the white kids in the community. And I think we need to find out the barriers to education. And also, I think we should look at diversifying the staff a little bit, a little bit more. And I think a community that, a, a school system, a administration that reflects the diversity of the community, I think that helps the community to grow and move forward.
Thank you. You now have thirty seconds to, to wrap it up. Anything else you might want to say?
Um, I'm just saying, I want to say thank you for having me. I would love to be a part of the school board. I, any information that I don't have, I will ask, I will get the information that I need, and I will make the best, I will make the best decision for my community. Thank you.
Thank you. And we thank you for participating and thank you for being out there and running. It's not that easy. Our candidate is Mr. Jonathan Van Gemert, is that correct? How am I saying it?
Van Gemert.
Van Gemert, okay, there, there we go. Mr. Van Gemert is running for the, the next candidate for the Bloomfield Hills School Board, and we're going to begin with his opening statement.
Hi, my name's John Van Gemert. I am an attorney. I've lived in Bloomfield Hills School District for four and a half years. However, my wife has been a teacher in the district for fifteen years. So I've been aware of the ongoings of the school district for about a decade and a half. I went to undergrad at LBN College and got a degree in economics and management. I, uh, for the first few years of my career, I was an accounts payable and supply chain management consultant. I chose to go back to law school, and for the last thirteen years, I've been an attorney. I'm running for school board. I guess that's the first question, so I won't get into that. But I'm asking for your vote on election day. Thank you.
Thank you. First question, correct. Why are you running for the school board?
I was lucky to be born into a family that values education, and I was sent to the best public schools in Grand Rapids. I chose to live in Bloomfield Hills because of its tradition of excellent schools. And I want to be a part of the continuing tradition of excellence. There are three excellent board members retiring. The board needs new members who approach decisions logically and who base their decisions on facts, data, and best practices. The board needs members who understand and can balance the needs of students, parents, educators, and the community. As a parent, two students, soon to be three, the spouse of an educator in the district and an active member in the community, I'm uniquely qualified to take into account each group's needs. I think our district is on the right track, and as a board, as board members, we want to move the district to new heights while raising the bar for all students in our district and throughout the state. I think that through continued strategic planning, we can fill gaps and help students push their boundaries while helping them grow into mentally healthy members of our society as well.
Thank you. Question two, if the COVID pandemic continues, what do you see as the long-term plan?
Let me start by saying that this question has a lot of nuance. What I mean by that is it depends on whether the pandemic continues at its current pace, whether we see levels like the Southern United States all over the summer, or whether we are able to achieve levels like Vermont's all over the summer. We need to have a plan ready to go for each scenario. Things we need to overcome are limited space, limited amount of educators, and disparate wants and needs of students, parents, and the community. It is not so much what is the plan as it is let us create a consistent plan with known parameters so that students, parents, so that students and parents have an expected outcome. outcome. We need to take the time to know and understand the various populations of our students. While ideally we could address individual needs, while ideally we can address the individual needs of each type of student and parent, we must make it clear what school will look like for each type of student and parent. The key is consistency with logical, easily determined outcomes, with plans that are based on health metrics.
Thank you. Question number three, other than the COVID, what is currently the most important issue facing the district?
COVID is likely to cause chaos in the budgeting. We already know that a not insignificant number of students are choosing to homeschool this year or go to private school. That will have a significant impact on the budget with the funds from the state being down significantly based on student counts. In addition, tax revenues are way down, and the state is likely to look to patient for cuts. Our response needs to be twofold. Advocate for education funding at the state level, deal with the ramifications, deal with the ramifications of the budget cuts. That said, of long-term importance is mental health awareness and education. We are in the midst of raising a second generation of children who are bombarded by media, technology, and information from an early age. Anxiety, depression, and other mental health issues have been steadily rising. Candidates Algaal, Southward, and I have planned to work with Superintendent Watson to introduce specific coursework and curriculum on mental wellness. I believe that through mental wellness education, we can increase student self-evaluation levels across the curriculum, thus increasing student success in school and personal well-being.
Thank you. Now you have 30 seconds to make your final statement.
A little something. Our community is lucky to have seven people who are highly qualified running for board. And I, I hope that the community votes for me, but I wish the best for whomever the community elects. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your participation. The Women Voters would like to thank the candidates for their participation. For further nonpartisan information on these candidates, check the LEAK website for our voter guard, lvwoa.org, or vote411.com. When known, we broadcast of this forum will be on YouTube and on the LEAK LWVWA website. The League of Women Voters is funded by contributions from concerned businesses and citizens. Our membership is open to men and women over the age of 16. Remember to vote on November 3rd. Democracy is not a spectator's court. Thank you.